You're all set.
Thank you. Jackie, can you see us?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. All righty. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting of Thursday, August 22, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote and remote attendance shall come toward quorum. This meeting is open to the public. If any members of the public attending in person would like to participate in the public comment section of the meeting, please be prepared to state your name and address before beginning your comments. So this evening, attending remotely, we have Jackie Wise. And Jackie, can you just confirm that you can hear and that we can hear you?
Yes.
Great. Okay. And then in person, we have Kelly Persio, Nancy DeLuca, Lauren Ruminas, and myself, Jen Star. And with that, the meeting is called to order, and we can move to the first item on the agenda, which is a discussion and vote to approve the 2024-2025 OA handbook changes. So Dr. Cabral?
As you can see, Assistant Principal TJ Flanagan is here, and Kelly is on remotely. So I will present Principal Kavanaugh first, who will then introduce this item, and we'll kick it off to Assistant Principal Flanagan. Ms. Kavanaugh?
Thank you so much.
No.
And we do have a slideshow presentation of the changes, if you want to take a look as well. I know Ms. Crewit has it. So thank you for having us. As we do every year, we do a robust review of our handbook to make sure that we continue to keep up to date in the sort of business needs of our students. So you've received a list of proposed changes. I do want to note that there were four on that list. The first one is not a proposed change, so we have three proposed changes for you this year. Two of these you've seen, actually, because it's the H block and our senior privilege, which I gave presentations on during our program of studies and scheduled committee review presentations I did for you back in the late winters. I'm going to pass the mic over to Assistant Principal TJ Flanagan, who is going to present these to you. Mr. Flanagan has been the chair of our Handbook Review Committee, which has students, parents, and faculty members on it for the past three years, and has done an excellent job leading this group to review our handbook for clarity, equity, and to ensure that all of our policies are up to date with state regulations. And all of these changes I presented to you over these past three or four years have been a result of his hard work. So I just want to take a moment to thank him for that, and then turn the mic over to TJ, sorry, Mr. Flanagan, to go through these changes with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Principal Kavanaugh. This is certainly a group effort and takes a village in regards to this student handbook. I do want to start with saying some thank yous to our members of our committee, which, as Principal Kavanaugh said, was consisted of central office, Oliver Ames staff, students and parents as well. So I want to give a special shout out to Carol Perez, Olivia Ramos from Central Administration, from the OA staff, Ryan Ring, Gemily Neely, Dan Masto Giacomo, Chris Koutros, and Matt Auger, our student representative Sonia Warren, and our parent representative Cindy Boyce. You know, we met this past year, we met monthly, and the conversation that we had in regards to the handbook and changes, proposed changes, and hearing different perspectives was, to me, just an amazing experience. I look forward to continuing this work going forward. I'm going to present, as what Principal Kavanaugh said, this is in terms of H block. This should look very familiar to you. I'm certainly just going to give you a brief overview of this. Our kids are constantly, I should say, they're working, they are working hard, they don't really have much time during the day for themselves. And so we have instituted an H block, which will give our kids an opportunity to take this time for what they need, whether it's enrichment, some social-emotional stuff, peer tutoring, homework classroom support. We really believe that it's really going to help out our kids, both academically and socially-emotionally as well. So that's one of our new sections, H block. Our next section is senior privilege. And so certainly, our seniors, you know, they're going off to their, you know, after high school, they're going off into the real world, whether it's college, workforce, military, and they're responsible, hopefully responsible adults. And so we want to give them this opportunity to have a reduced course load and to use this time for themselves, whether it's studying in the library, whether it's meeting with a counselor, whether it's attending work. We feel that we want to give them a little bit more freedom in regards to their, you know, and give them more choice in what they do during the school day. So that is the second one. And then finally, it's the senior final exemption policy. So currently, right now, the only time that absences are excluded is if they're only school-related. So right now, medical, anything medical, anything that is not excused. And so we felt, as a committee, that we needed to propose some additional language. And we understand that there are some kids that are to deal with some social-emotional issues, may, you know, go into some hospitalization and/or have surgery and are out of school and physically can't be in the building. And we feel that, you know, it would be unfair for us to count that against them. And so we would like to propose that hospitalizations and/or surgery where kids cannot physically be in the building, not count against them. So therefore, those would be exempted, and then they could potentially qualify for the senior final exemption policy. And lastly, Carol Perez, as you know, presented the bullying and harassment policy. So we are going to certainly add that to and update our school handbook to reflect that policy as well. So I don't know if you have any questions regarding H block or senior privilege or the senior final exemption policy.
I do. I have one. First of all, I appreciate all of the changes and the inclusion of bullying policy. On the additional language here, I think it's a fantastic step forward, but I just wonder about students who have, say, recurring medical issues as well. Someone who has this routine migraines or other seizures or something else that might cause them to be out that is a recurring documented illness and similar to hospitalization surgery, difficult for them to think about? Have you considered as a group how to handle those types of things where there are students with prolonged medical challenges?
So I will tell you, we take things on a case-by-case basis. So our, the other principal, Mr. Masto Giacomo, and myself, you know, if there's a situation where a kid, you know, is struggling to get to school because of, you know, a situation like you're explaining, we will take that into consideration and certainly have conversation with that kid and their parent or guardian, and then we'll make it certainly a decision from there. So we certainly, it's a case-by-case, you know, situation, and we deal with that appropriately. Any other questions?
Are we all set? Are the kids all set as far as signing up for H block?
So...
It could be a technological nightmare. Are we all set?
Yeah, yes, we are. We are. We've been working really hard this past summer. We're going to use that MindFlex software too as well. And there's going to be, it's a slow rollout, all right? And so I will tell you this, you know, the first day of school, you know, we're going to have that regular A through G with advisory, and then Ms. Kavanaugh and myself and Mr. Masto, we're going to make sure that, you know, we take this in stride, and, you know, it may be, probably be a two-week rollout in regards to H block and having kids sign up for it with the teacher and MindFlex Learning and getting them comfortable with the software. And then we'll then say, okay, schedule a time with the teacher during H block. And then from there, it's like everyone's going to move that H block location. And then therefore, if there's any snags or any questions, we can deal with them at that time. But it's going to be a very, it's going to be a slow rollout.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So the handout that we received also speaks to course change for language pertaining to grades and credits. So is there anything there in particular that we should be, I guess, what's different about that? And I don't know if you have the language in front of you that we received?
Yeah, so we've decided not to, we're going to table that, and we need to have some additional conversations about that language. So we'll probably look at that for next school year.
Okay.
I have a question. So senior privilege. I wish I was back in high school and had this. But anyway, are you, somebody is in charge of, okay, you have senior privilege, but you didn't quite make it in for second block, you made it in for third block, and it's happened 10 times. Are we under control here?
Absolutely, we are. Yes. So we determine in terms of academic good standing, attendance, all of that comes into play. So if a kid abuses senior privilege and they are, you know, cut in class, or, you know, then those privileges will be taken away.
Okay.
And they won't have them. So, yes.
Okay. Good luck with all of this. I'm very excited. And like I talked to you earlier, but I hope we get an update, you know, in a little while at how things are going.
We are super excited. I know that our staff and our students are super excited too as well. This is really going to give our kids an opportunity to take some time during the day that they never really had, to do stuff for themselves that will help them with school and, you know, other things that they need help with.
Okay.
Remind me how often senior privilege would be in the first or last period of the day?
So senior privilege would be, so a senior, for example, would have a specific block. So it would be like A block would be senior privilege. Now, with the new waterfall schedule, it might be first block. So what would happen is, if it was first block, say A block, day one, all right, they could come in at the beginning of second block, all right? And we will have someone in the atrium, they'll come in one entrance, they'll check them in, and then they go right to second block. In the event that the senior privilege is going on during the school day, and it's not first or last block, then they report to like the library, and they use it as a study, and/or they can, you know, set up appointments with their counselors. But really, they're using it for what they need, you know, in terms of academically or socially-emotionally. They're not allowed to leave if it's during the middle of the day, it's only first and last block.
I think you're asking how many days in the cycle would they, how many days are in the cycle, and out of those, say, per week, how many would it be first or last block?
Gotcha. So it's a seven-day cycle. I would say, if I were, I would say probably first or last block would be like combination three or four, I would say.
The way, I think, to remind you, interesting, the way the waterfall cycle works is every block meets, every class meets every time during the day once. So that means maybe we come into school late once and leave early once. Is that the question you're asking?
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would just, if there aren't any other questions, or if it's okay to say now, I just want to highlight that, once again, the high school is being creative and inventive in the way that they are challenging students to grow and expand. And is it, do we wait until something's absolutely perfect? Not always, but they're certainly not throwing things against the wall and see what sticks. There was a lot of planning and preparation that goes into it. I love the fact that they continually include student voice, that the staff is involved. And this, I couldn't ask for this anymore than I do, and they respond. And we love this, right? These are educated risks that we're taking with backups in case they're not successful, but it's part of the growth mindset that we believe makes us better, because you don't know if something works until you try it, and you're flexible and malleable and humble enough to know if it doesn't or what needs to be tweaked. And the best part of that is that we're modeling that for our students, which is the mindset we want them to have in life. We learn the most from the things that don't work perfectly the first time around. And so to Nancy's point, you know, do you have it under control? Yes, we have it under control, but we're going to work out the bugs as it happens, or I should say, they're going to work out the bugs with our support. But the fact that they put so much planning into it, that they have so many safeguards in place, that, yes, we may encounter things that happen, but that's what it means to be resilient. And that's what it means to learn as we go. And that's what we're trying to teach our students, especially in a post-COVID world, where they have, we've seen a decline in resilience, and we've seen a decline in being flexible. And that's what they're modeling on a daily basis. And we're really very proud of that thinking and the planning and the thought that goes behind it. It's a lot harder for them, as the leaders of the building, to do this, but they're willing to put in the work to make a better product for students.
I do have one more question. Sorry. This has nothing, it's the 10-day, the once-a-month...
Late start?
What's it called?
Tiger block.
Late start.
I think you're talking about.
Yeah, late start, once a month?
Yeah.
So for teacher planning and all that?
Yeah.
Oh.
Is that set yet? Is it, the dates are set?
Yes, the dates are set. The, I believe that, because I'll defer to you, Principal Kavanaugh, if you want to.
Yeah, so yeah, the dates are set, and they were sent out to parents in my back-to-school newsletter yesterday. It is 10 times throughout the school year. However, we joke that November's no school November.
Because there's so much time off.
So we didn't put one in November, and we put two in October instead. So you will see that for most, the most part consistently, it's the second Wednesday of every month, with some additional days on those months that we chose to put two. I actually, we actually had, I want to give a shout out to the incoming parents and guardians of our district for the high school, because we had an orientation last night and had probably close to 150 parents show up to learn about OA. And that was a big question that came up. And I was very, very transparent with the parents that we're taking, we are making sure to track our progress and the impact that these late starts have on student learning in our building, because this professional learning time for teachers is essential. And we do acknowledge that we're making a choice and we're taking a risk by removing 10 hours of time on learning for our kids every year to improve their learning with PLCs. And we want to make sure that we demonstrate to you the impact that this time is having on teaching and learning. So I talked to Dr. Cabral today, and we are going to pick several school committee dates where I will come and present to you on how things are going with the new schedule, with the late starts, and these new handbook policies that we just shared with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we can, we'll head back to the front of the room, and we can take another vote.
Thank you both very much.
You're welcome to stay, TJ. I know you have nothing else to do.
All cabinet, just so you know, if they aren't in attendance, watch the cabinet, watch the school committee meetings so that they're all up to date. So he will have the pleasure of seeing it later. So if he has to leave, I'm sure it's due to family commitments, but he absolutely will be watching it later.
We appreciate you.
All right. So if, since we have no more questions or comments on this agenda item, so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the changes to the OA handbook for 2024-2025? So move to move. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Fantastic. Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Ruminas, yes.
Percy, yes.
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. Next up, we are approving... A batch of minutes. So we have the regular school committee meeting minutes from, let's say, this is from July 18, 2024. Okay. Let's see. Hold on. Bear with me one second. Okay, yeah. So this is, I think this was passed, this might have been passed around tonight, or I don't, it's not right there.
No.
Yeah. So do you all have it?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. Okay. So this is, yeah, so this is just the minutes to go into the executive session. Gotcha. So any comments or questions or edits to the regular meeting minutes from July 18?
No.
Okay. All right. So I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 18. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Ruminas, yes.
Percy, yes.
Great. Okay. And then regular session minutes from Thursday, July 25, 2024. So this is for our regular meeting. Any questions, comments, or edits on July 25? It looked good to me, but I don't catch it.
I wasn't there, so I'm looking.
So I'm not hearing any comments or edits. So I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for July 25. Can I get a second? Second, Percy?
Wise, second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Ruminas, yes.
Percy, yes.
Workshop minutes from Friday, August 9. Any questions, comments, or edits on the August 9 minutes? Yeah, they, they looked good to me. Somebody like to make a motion then to approve the August 9 workshop minutes? So move to DeLuca. Can I get a second?
Second, Wise.
Great. Roll call vote. DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Ruminas, yes.
Percy, yes.
All right. So on to executive session. We have two sets of executive session minutes. Before we vote on them, does anybody have any, anything that they would like to discuss in a next executive session on either one of these? If nothing concerning is to be corrected, all right. So with that, then I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from July 18, but not release at this time. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Ruminas, yes.
Percy, yes.
And then executive session minutes from July 25. Again, any questions, comments that need to be discussed in exec session? If none, then I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from July 25, but not release at this time. Can I get a second?
Wise, second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Ruminas, yes.
Percy, yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Next up is a vote to approve an out-of-state trip. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. This is one that you've seen before. Coach Souza, Kyle Souza of the cross-country team is seeking approval to take 80 cross-country athletes to Goddard Park in Warwick, Rhode Island for a meet on September 28. He's unfortunately unable to be here today, but you do have the sheet, the proposal that he has submitted. And if you have any questions, the athletic director, Mary McDonald, is present remotely.
She's in, if you just can't see her, once she talks, I think. It'll show up. Hi, Mary. Welcome.
Hi, how are you guys?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
How's your summer been?
Good. Well, shortened because we've already started up sports last Friday, so we're in full swing.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay. Anything, anything you want to tell us? I mean, it's a routine of what we're doing.
Yeah, it's routine. They do it every year. I was just on in case there was any questions about this. And then I know we're doing the booster sponsors next. So, yeah, it's pretty routine. They've done it every year, the meet that's out of state.
Okay. All right. Great. Any, any questions or comments from the committee before we vote this? Okay. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion then to approve the out-of-state trip for the Oliver Ames cross-country team to participate at the cross-country meet in Goddard Park in Warwick, Rhode Island on September 28, 2024? So move to DeLuca. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
Roll call vote. Move to yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes.
Percy, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then our next agenda item is a vote to approve new sponsors. Dr. Cabral?
Again, A.D. McDonald has added new sponsors to the banner list that requires school committee approval. The sponsors are added to the list in alphabetical order. There are new additions in red, but to put them all together for you, they are Romero Companies Landscaping, Han Home Healthcare, Easton Learning Adventures, Fine Lines, Easton, Hanjani OBGYN, Michael Heikel Real Estate, Me &amp; Nina Chips, Novell Salon, Quartz &amp; Granite Pro, Walters Barbershop, and YMCA.
Any questions?
They all look good to me.
I did know, and I can, we can just send this back to you.
Email. There's a typo in one of the organization types.
Thank you.
One of the new ones? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So we can just shoot that back. Okay. Is A.D. McDonald still on? Yeah, she is. Do you have a question? Has this, have you been, have you been able to get in touch with the sponsors for fall sports and activities?
So the ones I just gave you for all of the fall sports?
Okay.
Any new sponsors they had for fall sports?
Okay, great. So just for our own kind of edification, you were able to identify the, an appropriate booster contact for each of the boosters' teams, and they are aware that their sponsors need to be approved and are doing that process now? So we shouldn't have any surprises later?
Yes, like we did in the spring, that I had no clue about. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
And just, and just as an add-on, Jackie and I are working on getting the policies, going over the policies of fundraising.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. All right. Excellent.
So we should have that next time.
What's that?
Yes. Okay.
So a question on that, and I am probably remiss in not knowing this all in the policy upfront, but do we review what the banner looks like in any way to ensure there is nothing on it that's questionable as well, or do we simply take it?
We currently do not. That could be something that we decide to put in our policy, but right now, we have...
But I believe the ones at OA, the ones that are along the major fence and the booth up at the top, we approve those.
That's right. You're right. Yeah. So the large permanent...
But not the ones that are hanging on the outside fence. We didn't.
Yeah. Yeah. So there are ones that are like a permanent, or not a permanent, but a long-term installation where somebody made a substantial donation, and we've gotten proof of what those designs would look like. But something that has come up that will be, you know, part of this discussion are things like, you know, this booster organization puts a price of $200, and you get this. And that booster organization charges $500, and you get a dinner plate-sized logo on a single banner that's shared. So making sure, or determining, at least having the discussion within the committee as to whether or not we think that we need to have a role in setting parameters around making sure that the donations and the advertising are sort of equitable. You know, so bigger discussion, and certainly one that we'll be leaning on you and Mrs. Kavanaugh for, for input as well. So.
Yeah, and obviously, I'm more than willing to, I can take a picture of what it looks like, like, once they get them done, and send them to you guys too, if you'd like, of what they currently do.
Yeah. It was more of a question of, I realized that we had a conversation last year on messaging, and if someone were to have a visual that we felt uncomfortable with, even though the business was something that we felt comfortable supporting.
Yep.
If they then took to having a logo or visual that then made us uncomfortable, we don't really have a process by which we literally do that.
Exactly.
That's what I wanted to confirm, and we can consider when they got policies.
Yeah. 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 We don't have a clear process now for that to address that. Yep. Okay. All right. Would somebody then like to make a motion to approve the additions to the sponsor list?
Wise, so move.
Second, DeLuca. DeLuca, second. I was waiting.
All right. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wise, yes.
Star, yes?
Percy, yes.
Okay. All right. Great. And thank you, A.D. McDonald, for joining us. Good to see you.
Of course. My pleasure. Yep. Excited for the new school year. Good luck this fall. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. So the next item, I'm going to make a motion to table this to a future meeting. I can actually name the meeting. This will be on, so we will move item six, which was the discussion on possible...
This will be on, so we will move item six, which was the discussion and possible vote to nominate a successor trustee-director to the Frothingham Memorial Corporation to our September 26th meeting. When the folks from Frothingham will be able to join us and they will get us materials in advance of that date. So can I get a second on the motion to?
Percy, a second.
Thank you. And roll call vote?
Luca, yes.
Wise and yes.
Star, yes.
Percy, yes.
Great. Schedule of payments. So since the committee last met, we have approved warrants 100S, which was for scholarships, 101S, 102S, which were both for operating expenses, 099S, which was a revision, a very tiny, I think, under a dollar revision to the previously approved warrant. And then 103S, 002S, 004S, 104S, uh, no, sorry, 103S, 002, and 004S, so those were all for routine operating expenses. And then we are in the process of approving 104S and 008S, but are having some technical difficulties, so I will respond back and we'll get that moving. Okay. And so next up, public comment. So we have a member of the public here?
Just enjoying me.
Okay, alright.
I'm so excited to have an audience that was like.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so no comments tonight. Next up, superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We are deep into the hiring season, believe it or not, hires are still happening. We have had some wonderful staff members that have left us since the retirements that we accepted in the spring, which we had many this year. But we have had some leave for opportunities in other districts that we just didn't have openings, whether they were an administrator opening or a specific department opening. And so we, of course, wished them well, and when they leave, I tell them, can't wait to welcome you back. And we hope to see them again, but that creates new openings, of course. Some taken internally, which creates a trickle-down effect, which creates more hires. So even today, I conducted interviews, tomorrow we'll be conducting interviews, probably even after school begins, we may have a few more. That is very, very typical and, and we're used to that. Unfortunately, we already had our new teacher orientation, or our new staff orientation. It went wonderfully, great job, once again by Kristen Marani, who's our English Department Chair at the high school. Thank you for those who attended, I sent your well wishes for those who were unable to attend. Such, it's always such a dynamic time to be in the room with these people that are so excited and have had such a good experience at their interviews and with the staff that they met and the lessons that they've conducted, the sample lessons that they do as part of the process. And they get to meet one another and they get to meet their administrators and their mentors and it's just a really great time. But we'll, we'll certainly get the new hires on board and we're moving along as quickly as we can. And in terms of an update for any hires over step seven, we've only had one. That again was a specialized area, it was not a classroom teacher, it was a specialized area, very difficult to fill. We got a wonderful candidate who's very experienced in an area that we definitely need a lot of experience and fortunately they accepted. So we are good with that. We also have, first day for staff, of course, is next week, the 28th. First day for grades one through 12 is Thursday, the 29th. We had an open house for our daycare, Town of Easton Staff Daycare yesterday. It was exciting to see all those new little faces, some of them going to be our future students in the district. Just a lot of excitement and, you know, last minute running around, getting things ready. And it's going to be very fun to see the halls filled with students again. It's not, it's a very eerie place to be, is in a school without staff and students everywhere, that's just not normal for us. So we're excited to welcome them back, done a lot of work this summer in terms of facilities and preparations and supplies. We had our summer school programs, so we're, we're excited to get back into the schedule again. Please check, speaking of schedules, kindergarten and pre-K starts later than Thursday, so if you look at our district website, you will see our district schedule. It's in like seven different places because we want people to find it very easily. But in addition to that, you will see all of the upcoming afternoon and evening events, all of the back-to-school events. They're typically very well-attended, but we want to make sure that parents know about them in advance. We try to separate them out by grade as much as possible so that people with multiple students can attend all of them. It's a phenomenal opportunity to meet with staff, to meet administrators, to see the building if your student is moving to a new building. So we encourage as much participation as possible. If for some reason a parent is unable to make one, we always make accommodations to fit that. We know people have work, have busy work and live schedules and so we can always make something happen. So please don't feel like if you missed it, that's your only opportunity. Please reach out to administration at the school and we'll see what we can do to, to work around your schedule. Also, we have, just today, I actually forwarded some information. We have another addition to the many colleges and universities we're working with in our early college and career pathway coursework. Quincy College has now added to the list. And I met with the president today, they are extremely accommodating for our needs. What I'm excited about is that Jen Tantillo, who's our coordinator for early college and career pathways, has really taken the ball and run with it in terms of the concurrent enrollment options. It's difficult to get a college and university on board with that, but the more we get on our roster, the more others are looking, saying, hey, how can we do that too? Concurrent enrollment, different than dual enrollment, is when a student is in high school, but enrolled in a college course either after school, in the summer, or on the weekends. Our students, majority of students that even have transportation to do something like that, many of them are involved in a lot of activities after school on weekends or they work. And so concurrent enrollment is when our staff is able to apply to the college or university as an adjunct professor. And the student can get dual credits, but we still call it concurrent because it's a different program. It is during their regular school day, they receive credits for Oliver Ames graduation requirements, but they also receive the credits from the institution. So we have several now, we also added Syracuse this summer as well. So that just keeps growing and growing and we will grow it as big as we can. You know, it started with an opportunity for first-generation students who maybe didn't think college was for them, or maybe needed some extra support during the school day from guidance, or just the comfort of having their familiar adults around them and taking it with, taking the course with their peers. But we've also been able to subsidize with grants as part of our participation in the South Shore Consortium. And so we've had either free or heavily subsidized, subsidized options for students to earn college credits while they're still in high school. Again, not only do they have those supports, but it gives them the opportunity to have enrichment opportunities because these are rigorous college-level courses. They're not going to put their name on it or, or allow the credits unless they are earned at the college level. And our teachers have gone through some rigorous criteria and evaluations in order for this to happen. So, so it provides that level that is in our strategic plan of making sure that we have remediation for all students who need it, but also enrichment opportunities for all students who need it. And so it's kind of a win-win-win-win-win. When we are fully up and running, we anticipate that students will able, be able to earn up to 30 credits before they graduate from high school, potentially earning an associate's degree before they leave. So we're super excited about that. We're also creating pathways, for example, if someone's interested in healthcare, we would have a series of courses for them in healthcare, business management, a series of courses in business management, so, and so on. So we're, we're getting there, we, it started a little rocky, only because we were among the first places to kind of go out on our own and do this outside of the, the DESI early college format, because we don't qualify for a lot of things. And so we sort of had to create our own path. We're small, but we're persistent and we're loud, so we were able to get together with the other 10 districts that we currently work with and create a bigger consortium. And pooling those resources has been of great value for us. So again, I want to shout out to Principal Kavanaugh and also Jen Tantillo for being open to working on something while it's still being built, which can be very overwhelming and certainly takes a lot of time and patience. And for just continuing to take it as far as it can go. So we're very happy about that. We also have been meeting with our security design team. School committee member, Luca, has been meeting with us on that. And we have a design amendment as a result. So the team, along with our police and fire departments, along with SEMREC, which is our regional dispatch, and several members of DPW and our own staff have been working together on the design and what we need, what we don't need, trying to pare it down. And we have come up with the recommendations for the needs in Easton and the design team has made the final design. That has gone through our legal team at the town level and we're, we're able to now move on. So we are going to present that to the municipal building committee at their meeting on, I believe it's September 24th, 23rd or 24th. Hopefully, with the approval of the MBC, they will make a recommendation to the school committee for approval of that plan, which would then come to the September 26th school committee meeting. And then we can continue to move forward with that project. So I just wanted to give an update that that's still working behind the scenes, we're getting all that lined up for you. Our strategic plan is getting ready to be launched. We had our management conference with our entire leadership team this summer, we worked on the action steps. We're putting all that information together, doing a final review, and we'll be launching that. A big part of that, of course, overarching everything is Equity and MTSS. MTSS being multi-tiered systems of support. That is an umbrella which goes over RTI, which are academic interventions, and PBIS, which are our behavior interventions and tiers. We have a lot of professional development coming to the district and we're very excited that that, along with Equity, which are actually very much intertwined, are permeated throughout our entire strategic plan. So we look forward to publishing that and sharing that across the district. And I think finally, for me tonight, was, well, I presume, I'm going to think maybe Chair Starr will talk about our PACE committee last night. I was very happy to take part in that, I want to thank all the citizens of the town who participated, but I'm sure Chair Starr would like to, to talk about that. And so I will save that for school committee notes, and that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just had one, how many new staff members do we have?
Oh gosh, dozens, but we can get a full list for you. Yeah, we typically put together a list at the end of the hiring season to share and we will definitely do that.
Okay.
We are putting out a, a press release on three new administrators and that should, I just did the final proof on that today, so I'm hoping they'll send me that tomorrow and I'll send it out to the public and to all of you as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the new hires are still not, I, not done, I understand.
Three interviews tomorrow. I, I did catch that they were still interviewing, just out of curiosity.
Yeah. And when I, when we say new hires, of course, they're not all classroom teachers, which most, which most people think of, right? We have custodians, we have nurses, we have therapeutic staff, we have service providers, special educators.
Power professionals.
Power professionals, ABA technicians, interventionists. So, so when I say dozens, it's because we have such, such turnover, some of our positions, we have powers that move to teachers or an ABA tech that moves to B CBA. So it's exciting when we have openings because typically it means somebody moved up in our district, which is of course our goal.
Yeah.
Great, alright, so assistant superintendent notes.
Great, thank you so much. I wanted to highlight something that Dr. Cabral was talking about when she was mentioning particular teacher leaders that we have in the, in the district, like Kristen Marani, Jen Tantillo, she mentioned the summer program. I want to highlight, we had six amazing educators running our summer programs, our C program and our E S Y programs, who were Meg St. Martin, Rita Pastore, Amy Meehan, Abby Boyd, Steph San Pietro, and Mark Lenahan. And they together, it just shows the dedication that our staff have and their commitment to leadership, that although they might not be necessarily building administrators, they are, there are so many opportunities for them to take leadership positions. And with that being said, today I had the wonderful opportunity to meet and spend the day with our, we are rebranding the curriculum leadership team to be called the District Instructional Leadership Team. Because it is made up of not just curriculum leaders, but also department heads who serve as curriculum leaders in their area, but their name in the district are department heads. Administrators, Special Act coordinators, and curriculum leaders in K through eight. And we had a fantastic day, the conversation was phenomenal. We really, we looked at our strategic objectives from our strategic plan and the initiatives focusing in specifically on UBD, our units, using understanding by design. And revising the action plan so that we can, we are ready to go and everyone understands what their roles are. And we had, we are also in the process of beginning to create an instructional vision for the district. We did the Back to the Future Protocol, so those of you that were on the Strategic Planning Committee, it was, it was phenomenal. We all pretended we were in the, we were in the year 2029 and what did instruction look like in 2029? And then thinking about how we got there by, by noting our, our current status. So it was, it was really wonderful, having those conversations. And one of our commitments to each other is to celebrate each other and celebrate the successes we have and to laugh and have, and be embedded in laughter. So we definitely experienced that today. We ended the day with an introduction to something that our, our administrative team will be starting off with and then the whole district will be a part of this year. We applied through DESI and we were accepted as a district. It's called the S3 Academy. And this, the acronym S3 is Systemic Student Support Academy. And we're really excited because a lot, oftentimes districts will apply by, on a school-by-school basis. All four of our schools were accepted, so we will be launching this together as a, as a district with specific school attention. And what the academy is, is it, it's, it's a partnership, it's run by the Rennie Center and the, and by Boston College. Sorry, had to point that.
And I said, okay. I support this, we work together on it and we're going to be working with them all year, so I might be like part eagle after this.
It is, it partners with schools to re, I'm just reading the blurb about the program description because I think it defines it best. It partners with schools to reimagine student support to focus on the holistic development of every child. A strength, strengths-based preventative approach to student support will become part of the foundational structure of each participating school, ensuring that every child receives the support they need at that time that they need it. Participating schools will develop the skills, knowledge, and internal capacity necessary to provide holistic, integrated student support for all students and will support educators to confidently identify and implement practices, build internal staff capacity, and engage with teachers, families, students, and community. Our first year, it's, like I said, it's a three-year commitment. Our first year consists of six 90-minute network content sessions where it's a Zoom, you know, over Zoom or over whatever platform they're using. And it's with all the schools throughout the Commonwealth that are participating, so we actually become part of a cohort. And then each school gets 20 hours of individual coaching. So we have a coach from, from the Rennie Center and Boston College, and she will be working, her name is Jennifer Bocart, I think, is her last name. She will be working directly with our administrators, each separately, 20 hours each, so.
We've already had extensive intake interviews.
Right, yes, we have our last intake interview tomorrow.
That's great.
And then year two, there's some more content sessions, 10 hours of individual coaching session for each school. And then it does dwindle down, but it's building capacity where we will have a streamlined student intervention team system. We'll have, the SIT process will be the same throughout the district, we'll have the same format. We will also be creating a list of supports and partnerships throughout the town and the area, surrounding area for families, for, for students that, that need particular things, whether. whether for their interests, to get them involved in, in things outside of school, so that we can, we can have that for them. But it also is really focusing on individual students and from a strength-based perspective. I will tell you that when I was a principal in a previous district, I did work with Boston College using the similar model, and it was highly effective, and I'm super excited that they launched this academy, because this will be, this will be really wonderful for, and changing for our district.
And the cost is?
And the cost is free.
Yes, I just want to make sure the public knows. It sounds like a lot. It is a lot.
Yeah, it's through a grant, it's through a grant that DESI has.
Yes.
And they put it out to, and we had, we had to go through an application process and an interview process, and we were accepted.
Wonderful. It is very exciting. I just, can I just?
There's four, there's four districts this year that were accepted.
If I could just add a disclaimer, because I just remembered that this is recorded for posterity. I do not have anything against Boston College.
It's a running joke that we have.
It is, for those that aren't frequent flyers to our school committee meetings, soon-to-be Dr. Pruitt is soon-to-be Triple Eagle. I have my Husky Northeastern roots, and it's a running joke. I have no problem with your actual institution. Yeah, Boston College, thank you. Sorry.
We gotta meet you over there. Some fun competition, especially during the B-Pot.
Yes, which we won this year. Sorry.
What? And then the last thing I just want, oh, did anybody have any questions about that?
No, it's amazing, though. So I would imagine that getting accepted into this reflects an enormous amount of effort and probably an enormous amount of all of the work that's been done to demonstrate need and readiness. So for everybody who was involved in that, which I imagine you had a very big hand in, but with the team.
Director of Special Services, Craig Davidson.
Yeah, thank you, because this sounds really amazing.
Yeah, we're excited.
It would be wonderful at a future session as you identify what this is going to look like in terms of change that gets experienced by students and families and staff as they're working through it. It would be great to get an update on that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And what was I gonna say? Okay. The last thing I wanted to share with you is really exciting, and actually Director of Special Services, Davidson asked me to share this with everyone, that we are starting a unified basketball team at the high school. So this is, Mary Mc, Athletic Director McDonald has been wonderful at helping orchestrate this, along with Principal Kavanaugh and Director of Special Services, Davidson. This is going to be such a great opportunity. It's an inclusive sports program that unites students with and without disabilities on the same team. They already have a practice schedule. They have teachers that are already applying to be the coach. You know, there's, there's a lot of excitement around this team, and we even have like a draft schedule. So there's going to be four, wait.
Four.
Four home games, but there's a couple away games as well. So we're really excited about that. Just wanted to share that with you.
That's great. In addition to our Unified Track Program.
Great.
Yep, we're gonna run both.
Awesome, awesome. Okay. And that's all I have today.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Pruitt?
Nope.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
School committee notes. Nancy, anything for this week?
Sure. First of all, good luck to everybody back to school, everybody, staff, kids, parents. Good luck. It's always exciting, but then it's like, oh, let's, the summer is over. I believe it's September 4th. Is that a Tuesday?
That's a Wednesday.
Oh, is it?
The third is.
So September 3rd.
Yes, the election is September 3rd.
So I couldn't remember, 3rd or 4th. So remember to vote in the primary on September 3rd. Be careful around the high school going into vote, because it is a day of school for all of our kids, but not in November when we vote that day. And then, I just had one question. I don't know if I said, the last meeting, we were gonna approve a bunch of programs, but Chrissy wasn't here. Are we gonna be doing that at any point, approving anything?
Right. So these are programs that were already approved. There was some, some question around the contracts, whether or not they needed to be approved every year.
Oh, okay.
But because they're curriculum, they're exempt from that, so you don't need to approve them every single year.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
They are the same programs that you've been using.
They're, they're multi-year contracts, but because of the cost, we didn't know if it met the threshold that it had to be approved every year. So it's been confirmed. It does not need to be every year. You approved it already in the totality of the contract, and so we're good. But thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, just curious.
Anything else?
No.
All right, Jackie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Lauren?
So I want to wish, like Nancy, I want to wish everyone a wonderful first day of school. Summer, it's not long enough. We had a, Jen and I went to the new hire breakfast the other day, and it was really, really nice to see new faces in the district. I had the opportunity of attending the morning of, the second day of the management conference, and it was really, really exciting to see the work that the management team is doing with the strategic, strategic plan, the five-year strategic plan, and action items that are for that. I can't wait for it all to be flushed out and done. It's exciting because I was part of the committee from the beginning, so it's nice to see how much it's grown. What else do I have? Oh, Parent Square has, seems to have been rolled out, and it's nice to have a one communication tool for the entire district. And it is really nice, the different features that it can do, such as you can, on the app, you can download the district calendar to your own calendar, which is really nice. And I look forward to seeing the others, I know there's gonna be demos at back-to-school night, and so it'll be nice to see what else it can do, because I'm sure there's more than I can figure it out myself.
If I could just speak to that before you move on. If, for those not familiar, it takes the place primarily of our communication system when we have emergencies or mass notifications, snow days, et cetera, of school messenger. But it also wraps in a couple of other programs. We're, we're actually saving money by using one platform instead of several for different functions, and this one has more functionality. So in addition to the demos that are going to be on the back-to-school night, our technology page will have a lot of videos to help parents for whenever they're ready to tap into all of the resources on it. And we have a newsletter that's going to be coming out of central office monthly, and there'll be a Parent Square tip each time, as well as links to the videos and resources, so everybody can get on board. It's sometimes scary or frustrating to use a new thing, but I assure you, everybody will love this. It's much more user-friendly, and it's all in one place, and it's a lot easier. So I want to thank the tech team for all they work on it.
I think it will be super helpful for families of multiple kiddos in multiple schools.
Yes.
Because it's all one-stop shop.
I second that. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up.
It also has wonderful translation services on it. So our, our families that might need some translation services, it's right there on, on there. So it helps with accessibility as well.
Yes. So IT Director Olivia Ramus has been great at launching that, and Carol Perez, I do EIA Coordinator, has been very involved in making sure that everything we add is fully accessible in every way to every user, including by language, and this was a perfect example. So they vetted it out for full capability for any disability, but also for language access. So having these professionals on board is really making things a lot more equitable and accessible for everybody in the district. We really appreciate their efforts.
And I was also gonna remind everyone to vote at the state primary. Anything else?
All right, great. Kelly?
Just a couple notes. So I am one of those parents with kids in multiple schools. So first of all, again, you know, I do wish everyone a good start. I'm sure some kids are greeting that, and probably staff as well, with a little bit of anxiety and some with a lot of excitement. I was, I dropped off my freshman yesterday at orientation and saw older students standing outside cheering them all as they came in. That got emotional. I was like, oh my goodness. But I don't remember seeing that in prior years, so I give a lot of credit to that. I think that seems to be relatively new. At least the last two times I dropped kids off at the door, they just kind of went. This time, it was, it was nice to see them greeted in that way. And I think I got a lot of great feedback on how the day went, and just the organization of it, actually sitting with your advisor yesterday, just a lot of, it feels like a lot of change as a parent who's been through this a few times, and really positive change in terms of how the orientation was run and all of that. And I know there's, for parents whose child may have missed it, or parents whose kids are still nervous, there are still, for new students, two sessions tomorrow and two sessions on Monday where they can walk their schedule at the high school to get comfortable that they know where they're going. So I think that's super helpful. There was a great session last night. There were a lot of parents with a lot of questions, and they all took H-block in stride. So we'll see how that goes, but all the parents went, okay, that makes sense. Unfortunately for Principal Kavanaugh, I will say there was a lot of like, so this is like Focus Block, and she's like, I'm not sure. And I was like, yes, it's like Focus Block. That's how I described it at my house. So it was like, okay, yep, nope, I get that. So I do think, you know, it will go smoother for the kids than they realize, but it seems like they're all getting the hang of it. So I give a lot of, a lot of kudos to that. I know a lot of effort goes into organizing that, so that the, the day goes smoothly and the start of school goes smoothly. And similar for the Blanche James kids. There's several sessions next week, popsicle parties, and meet the teacher, and a session on Friday for the kindergartners, because I have a kindergartner too. And so a chance for them to sort of get acclimated before they actually go in. So if parents haven't seen all of those great things, they are out there. Under Lauren's urging, I did download Parent Square and tried it all by myself, and it is actually pretty intuitive and awesome to then log in and see notices for both kids at both schools at the same time up here, and got all excited today when a pop-up appeared from the kindergarten teacher greeting us and giving some information about herself. So really, really amazing just to have it all in one place, so you're not searching through emails like I used to do. So kudos to the team that put that together and to the staff that continues to populate it, because I know it's another thing to learn, but it will make our lives easier.
Can I just add that, that I know you don't have students in Richardson Homestead and EMS currently, but the Principal Carol and Principal Getchel were leading tours for new students, and there's a lot of wonderful events in all the schools to welcome the kids back.
I appreciate that. Yes, I don't have, I somehow missed two of the four schools.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to let everyone know that it's not, you.
There were a lot of.
But there's also stuff going on.
And I'm sure there was nerves in all schools. I will admit that, but I definitely, I feel like I'm on the bookend of freshman and kindergarten, and the kindergartner wants to know when he gets homework and when he gets to go.
Oh, that's great.
Ready to go. Oh, very, ready to go. Yep. So, we're ready to do a countdown. So as opposed to me, who wants somewhere to go on. That is it for me.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, this is weird. This is my, after 21 years, I do not have a kid starting.
It is weird.
Starting in Easton Public Schools. My, my back-to-school experience is a little different this year. But I'm thinking about, you know, I remember, I remember having, I had a bulletin board with all the paper notices, and then you try to consolidate them and write them all down in a calendar, and oh my gosh, what a logistical nightmare it was. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, back then, that was, that was pre, that was before Easton Public Schools had Google. Like, that might have been before Google existed.
I, I had color-coded pages before Google existed for the older kids. It was like right now.
We're reminiscing about the old days now. Yep, we've come a long way.
2003. So, yeah, yeah. It was just, it was just reams of paper, and you hope you got everything out of the backpack, and that was the only way you knew anything.
You hope it all made it into the backpack.
Yeah, yeah. So we've come a long way, which is amazing. Okay, so, so just wanted to thank, thank Dr. Cabral and our Director of Finance, Andrea Starzavsky, for putting on a really informative and, informative deep dive into school finances and, and the processes of the business office. So we had that, was that just earlier this week?
Yes.
Yes.
Long week. So that, so that was on Monday, but incredibly informative, and I think time well spent. And the school committee, we are working on our own goals, evaluating our, our progress against last year's goals and, and putting forth, or form, formulating our goals for next year. So that's something that we'll be working on over the next few weeks or months. And so, sort of a bit of a segue into that, on the town side, the town kicked off and had its first meeting last night for four very informative hours of.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, yes. Yep, yep, yep. So we adjourned it, we were exiting Queesett House at 10:00 PM. And, but there was, I think, 15 in attendance?
16.
15, 16 in attendance. So, so this is the PACE Committee, which is, stands for Promoting a Sustainable Easton. The establishment of the committee was voted on at the Maytown meeting, and we, the school committee and select board jointly selected members of the public to serve on the committee. And so last night was our kickoff meeting, and the intent is for future meetings to be broadcast. So, so we've set a cadence of, of once a month for full meetings, and then there may be some intermittent workshop meetings in between. But it was very well organized, and thanks to Tom Broussard for taking on the role of chair. He has a lot of experience in Easton Town Government and will, will be a great leader of this group. And.
Nancy Donahue.
And Nancy Donahue is the vice chair. And we, you know, started to, to get into orienting everybody to the, the key line items in the budget book, some of the processes and background on municipal finance and all of the new, I mean, you could teach a master's level class on the content that we'll be learning. So it is, it's very in-depth. But definitely glad that the work has started. Lot of good energy, lot of great questions.
Multiple perspectives, lenses. It was so great to see such a cross-section of interests, backgrounds, knowledge, really great questions, everything.
Yeah, I agree. I think it'll be very productive and very fruitful, and, you know, the end goal is to, at, there'll be multiple waypoints along the way where, where information and, and learning and, and, you know, ideas for solutions to our long-term financial issues will be presented and shared with the public and seeking public feedback, and then to do, have something concrete to propose at the town meeting in May. So a lot of work, a lot of hours are going to go into this, but we certainly hope that members of the public start to learn about it, hear about it, get interested, and look for some of the collateral that's going to come out of this, or, or, you know, listen to or join meetings. So, so that. We, they are working that out, but we're looking for a space that can comfortably fit 16-ish people around a table for hours, but also have space for the public.
And potentially, help public, yeah.
And, and.
And be able to stream.
Livestream, and have, and have committee members be able to participate in a hybrid format possibly. So there aren't that many spaces in town that fit the bill, but there'll be, the chair and vice chair will be working on that.
Is there a method for letting the public know when these meetings are going to take place, and the time, the dates?
Yeah, so they are, they are posted like any other, you know, any other public meeting. So it's a public body, so meetings are posted 48 hours in advance, but I will pass that along to the chair to, I believe we, we tentatively scheduled several meetings last night, so I'll pass that along, that having that, you know, having those maybe land on the town calendar or some type of communication going out.
There's actually a PACE website now as well that Town Administrator Reed put together. And so that has all of the documentation. It will have all of the minutes and agendas in one place. That might be another good place to put the schedule as well.
Yep, that's a great idea. Yep, so we can, we can pass that along to the chair to try to get those, the meetings that we know about already. try to get those, the meetings that we know about already, to get those on a calendar or somewhere that's visible to everybody, so that you can mark your calendar and join us for an evening of numbers. So.
Are they recorded?
Last night's was not because of the venue that we were in, and also because it was for, especially for the members of the public at large, who aren't used to being on a camera yet. It was intentional to, to have at least the first meeting to get people comfortable with the idea of having to ask questions on camera in a recording that folks can go back to later, but the intent is for the, the future ones to be recorded. Yes. All right. So I think that was all I had. Happy back-to-school for everybody. Enjoy the last week of summer. And, yeah, we'll be back at it. Our next meeting will be on September 12th. Yep, so we'll be back to the bi-weekly meetings. Okay. So any other comments or questions from school committee before we, before we go into executive session? No? Okay. All right. So I make a motion to go into executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, subsection 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Eastern Educators Association Power Professional Unit. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Percy, a second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Percy, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.